Live from El Paso County, Texas, the Veterans Capital of the USA. From inside to the Alisa Chacon Commissioners' courtroom of the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse, you are watching the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meeting.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, December 8, 2025. Today, we are joined by A.S.A. interpreter Salina Salum and Tamara Marquez. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Commissioner Olgin, would you like to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance students for today?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone. So today, we are blessed to have a rather large group of students from Fabens High School that are going to be leading us in the pledge. So as they make their way to the podium, I do want to give them a shout out. So these are students from the Texas Association of Future Educators, Fabens Chapter, and from the Student Council. The Texas Association of Future Educators Chapter, eight of these young folks actually just made it to state, so they will be competing at the state level here in the next few months. So congratulations to them. And of course, I want to give a shout out to their teachers, Ms. Sotelo and Mr. Vasquez. Without them, without their support, this wouldn't be possible. And thank you again to Dr. Segovia, the Superintendent for Fabens. And these students will actually be receiving a tour of the county courthouse after they listen to a few resolutions here in the Commissioners' courtroom. So I want to give a big shout out to Lynn from the Law Library as well for always doing such a great job and hosting our students when they come take tours of the courthouse.
Thank you, welcome.
I think we're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you so much. We welcome you and enjoy your day here at the court. Thank you.
Thank you all. Great job.
And now we will receive an invocation by Pam Feroni.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning. It is good to see you all, Judge San Diego and Commissioners. All who are with us today are invited to join me as I pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed, holy and honored, be your name. For the book of Revelation, the unveiling or revealing, tells us, "Who shall not fear you, O Lord, for you alone are holy." Thy kingdom come. According to your word in Revelation 11:15, the kingdoms of this world have become the kingdoms of our Lord and of his Christ, and he shall reign forever and ever. We declare, "Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven." We know that in heaven no child is neglected, hungry, abused, trafficked, or harmed in any way, for your word is clear in Revelation 21:4, and God will wipe away every tear from their eyes. There shall be no more death, nor sorrow, nor crying. There should be no more pain, for the former things have passed away. Give us this day our daily bread. Jesus' words written in John 6:35 are clear. "I am the bread of life; he who comes to me shall never hunger, and he who believes in me shall never thirst." And forgive us our trespasses, the offenses we have committed against you, O God, as we forgive those who trespass against us. For in Matthew 6:14 and 15, Jesus reveals that if you forgive men their trespasses, your heavenly Father will also forgive you; but if you do not forgive men their trespasses, neither will your heavenly Father forgive your trespasses. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For the word of God is clear in James 1:13. Let no one say when he is tempted, "I am tempted by God." For God cannot be tempted by evil, nor does he tempt anyone. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. For unto us a child is born, and unto us a son is given, and the government will be upon his shoulder, and his name will be called Wonderful Counselor Mighty God Everlasting Father Prince of Peace. Of the increase of his government and peace there shall be no end, upon the throne of David and over his kingdom, in order to order it and establish it with judgment and justice from that time forward even forever. The zeal of the Lord will perform this. Today, when we declare thy kingdom come, we celebrate with the words from Handel's Messiah, "The kingdom of this world is become the kingdom of our Lord and of his Christ, and he shall reign forever and ever, king of kings and lord of lords." Hallelujah. Lord, we are grateful that you have given us your truth in your word. You sent your Son, born in a manger, into the world as Savior, Prince of Peace, the Word, the Way, the Truth, and the Light. The people who walked in darkness have seen a great light. Upon them, a light has shined. Amen, and so be it.
Thank you. We welcome you. My best to your family, Mrs. Feroni. Thank you.
Judge, would you like to make opening comments before we begin?
Yeah, thank you. Well, you know, thank you for being here. We welcome you on behalf of myself and our Commissioners. We're always extremely thankful that you're here with us today. You're going to hear some incredible resolutions. El Paso, I mean, one of the things that makes us unique is that we recognize people, organizations, and we allow others to understand who these individuals are because they make such an impact on our community. I just want to wish you well through the holidays and make sure that you go to Escarate Lake for the lights. You'll be very, very impressed with what we have out there. So I thank you very much. As you could see, our, I had a struggle with parade, I think is what it was called, so. We'll give you a little chance to see that, but... Yeah, the drone show was pretty magnificent. Yeah, please take your families. You have the opportunity to drive around the lake, or you can stop. And there's so many places to take pictures with your family. But, you know, I keep saying that this, for some reason, this Christmas has to be very special. A lot of things when, you know, the shutting down of the benefits like SNAP and federal government, and still a lot of people struggling out there. So if you can make it a point not only to be kind to your family, but go a little outside of your family, I think we're going to show the rest of the country what a great place El Paso is. So thank you once again for being here and wishing you the best this whole week. Thank you.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 4A through 4V. We do have a correction to read in for item 4F. The correction reads, "Accept the Texas County and District Retirement System (TCDRS) Plan Assessment for Plan Year 2026, Contract Number 2025-1024." We also have a request to delete item 4T, which is approve and authorize a county judge to sign the Interlocal Agreement for Law Enforcement Services with the El Paso County Hospital District, doing business as University Medical Center of El Paso for Law Enforcement Services at the main hospital campus and satellite emergency sites from December 1st, 2025 through November 30th, 2028, in the amount of $1,171,611.67. Contract number 2025-0988. This item will be brought back at a later meeting. Are there any other items members of the court or public would like to pull?
If not, I'll move to approve.
A motion by Judge San Diego to approve, second by Commissioner Olgin. The voting is open. Motion carries. Item five, Resolutions. 5A, Approve and Adopt a Resolution Recognizing the El Paso Marine Honor Unit for its exceptional service, sacrifice, and dedication to honoring our nation's heroes and its lasting contribution to the veterans and families of El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you. Could you please come up, please? Oh, Mr. Wayne. Thank you. As you know, that we're the Veterans Capital of the USA, so we always get to honor all of these amazing contributions toward that end. Well, I have the honor of presenting this resolution, and then we'll hear from our speakers. Whereas El Paso County proudly recognizes the El Paso Marine Honor Unit for its outstanding dedication and continued service to the veteran community, providing solemn and dignified honors to those who have served our nation. And whereas El Paso Marine Honor Unit was established in September 2015 with a mission of providing an honor firing party detail for deceased veterans at their interim, ensuring that each veteran is laid to rest with the military honors they have earned. Whereas since its formation, the El Paso Marine Honor Unit has conducted more than 900 honor firing details and memorial services for deceased veterans throughout the El Paso area, reflecting a decade of unwavering commitment to duty, honor, and respect. Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, when restrictions limited ceremonial participation, the El Paso Marine Honor Unit was on several occasions the only organization authorized to render honors at Fort Bliss National Cemetery, ensuring that no veteran was buried without the dignity of a proper military farewell. Whereas the El Paso Marine Honor Unit has also played a vital role in supporting the unaccompanied veteran burial program, standing in solemn tribute to those veterans who have no known family, ensuring that every service member is honored and remembered as part of our nation's promise that no veteran will ever be forgotten. Whereas through the unit has been a reduction in membership due to age and medical challenges, it continues to faithfully serve the veteran community by providing honors for their fallen comrades with the same reverence and professionalism that has defined their service since inception. Now therefore, be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court, hereby expresses its deepest appreciation and gratitude to the El Paso Marine Honor Unit for its exceptional service, sacrifice, and dedication to honoring our nation's heroes, and commends the unit for its lasting contribution to the veterans and families of El Paso County. Signed this 8th day of December, 2025.
We have a motion to approve by Judge San Diego, second by Commissioner Stout. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Welcome. Mr. Wayne, you have the, also our Veteran of the Year as well. Actually, our first, our first Veteran of the Year.
Thank you, Judge. The Commissioners, we start out a little bit bigger than when we originally, what we have right now, but we're still dedicated to taking care of our deceased veterans. It's a job we don't like to do, but we love to do because it's the right thing to do. And being the only veteran group right now for this length of time that's doing this, we're pushing to get more. We have started a Veterans El Paso Honor Unit through the United Americans Veterans Organization. So for the past year, I've been dual-hatted working with both of them so that, again, if we can't do it, they go off there and try and do it. And again, it's a commitment that we're going to go as long as we can. And again, thank you.
Thank you. You want to introduce yourselves, please?
Morning. My name's Rafael Lavenos.
Thank you.
Ascension, Pena.
Thank you.
Pedro Gomez.
Thank you.
Eric Santiago.
Thank you.
Good morning. Jose Martinez.
Thank you. You know, sometime back, about four years ago, I was asked to go to an unaccompanied burial, and I don't think I've ever gone through a more sad experience. And one of the things when we talk about being the Veterans Capital of the USA, we get challenged, right? I mean, how can we have an unaccompanied burial with nobody there? I mean, these were the landscape. We're trying to, you know, get the casket out. It was just, I'll never, ever forget that. And now, after everybody, as always, you know, you all rallied, now we've had as many as 100 people show up at unaccompanied burials, and that makes all the difference. The next thing we need to do is try to identify that someone doesn't end up in that situation, that didn't have friends, didn't have family. And I know there's a lot of work going towards that. Tony and others, and Debo and others are trying to figure out, you know, what can we do before we get to that point to realize that they were unaccompanied? So I thank you. It's something very important for El Paso. As you mentioned, the word dignified, oh my goodness, that's, you have to, you can't be a veteran and not have that, you know, someone honoring you in that honor. So we thank you very much, and we'd love to take a picture with all of you. Thank you. Thank you.
Item 5B, a proven adopter resolution recognizing the first, second, and third place winners of the 2025 sticker design contest in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you. This is such a special resolution, and I'd like to publicly thank Lisa for everything. People don't realize how much goes on behind the scenes to do the elections. I mean, it's just amazing. People just show up like magic, everything just was there. But Lisa, thank you so much for everything that you do. So I'd like to read the resolution. Whereas voting is a fundamental act of civic participation through which individuals contribute to the strength of our democracy, and while it is only one form of civic engagement, it remains one of the most powerful ways for young voters to make their voices heard and shape the issues that affect their lives and communities. Whereas voter education is essential to fostering a culture of participation, equipping future voters with the knowledge and awareness necessary to understand the electoral process and inspiring our youth to register and vote once they become eligible. And whereas for the fourth edition of the I Voted sticker contest, the El Paso County Elections Department invited local elementary school students to decide the next future voter sticker, and high school student to decide the next I Voted sticker, for both of which will be proudly distributed during the 2026 electoral season in El Paso County. And whereas through the power of art, the El Paso County Elections Department has fostered greater participation and civic engagement among the next generation of voters. Through this contest and for years to come, we're committed to using the sticker design contest as a creative and impactful tool to inspire civic pride and encourage lifelong participation in the democratic process. Whereas this annual contest reflects El Paso County's ongoing commitment to engaging youth and celebrating creativity, and ensuring that every resident, present, and future understands the importance of participation in the democratic process. Now therefore be resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that recognize the first, second, and third place winners of the 2025 sticker design contest. Signed this eighth day of December 2025.
We have a motion to approve by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Stout. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners Lisa Wise, El Paso County Elections Administrator. Before I start talking about this wonderful program, I'd like to invite our three winners for the Future Voter stickers and the I Voted sticker. So if I can have all six of my recipients up here, I know there's some in the back and some not. Stand right, if you guys want to stand right here.
Welcome, Chico.
And of course, Chico. So this year, the El Paso County Elections Department, as you stated, invited local elementary and high school students to showcase their creativity and promote civic engagement through the 2025 sticker design contest. This is something that we started, I think they said this was our fourth, so we've done it a couple of times, and every time it gets, it's better and better. We get more submissions, we get more judges, we get, the art is improving as well. So the Future Voter category was open to elementary school students, and the I Voted category was open to high school students. This year, we've received 162 submissions compared to 68 for the last two midterm, I'm sorry, for the last midterm election year. The first place winning designs will be distributed to voters during the 2026 election. So everybody will be seeing them out. Sorry, it's not flipping through for me. Okay, here we go. So an interesting thing is we had, this was blind judging, as far as, you know, our judges were not able to see the names or anything of that on the competitors. But as you can see, we have six wonderful young ladies from El Paso County who managed to secure all of our spots this year. So I'm going to read off our Future Voter stickers first, and then we will go to the I Voted stickers. And we have Ms. El Paso USA here to help hand out, thank you, to help hand out the certificates. And afterwards, we have some donations back in our office that we'd like for you guys to come back and grab as well. So for the Future Voter, third place, we have Franchella Belen Marine from Lamar Elementary, fifth grade. If you want to come over here and get your. Afterwards, we'll take pictures with the court. So if you guys wanted to stand up here, go on that side with Pablo. Our second place for Future Voter is Zoe Tarango from Alicia R. Chacon International School, sixth grade. Congratulations. And our first place Future Voter sticker that you'll see thousands and thousands, hopefully running around in 2026, is Sofia Salas from Coach Wally Hartley, fourth grade.
Congratulations.
Yeah, they did great. As you can see, we posted their art up here, and we've posted on our website, and you'll see it out. Again, you'll see these first place winners out in the, out in the community once we get started with 2026. The I Voted, which were the high school students, for third place, we have Jamilette Margarita Garcia from Mountain View High School, 12th grade. Congratulations. And if you can see these, I mean, these stickers are so gorgeous, it's hard to pick because every single one was so, it was so creative and colorful and vibrant, and it just, we really, we love seeing everyone's talent. So in second place for the I Voted is Sofia Alexa Garcia from Horizon School, 12th grade. Congratulations. And our number one, first place, where we will be printing hundreds of thousands of these stickers for the community, is Novelli Leon Fortenberry, 10th grade, Eastwood High School. Congratulations. Judge, I just want to take a couple of minutes really quick and thank our judges because we would not be able to do this without them. Every two years that we've done this, we've reached out to community leaders, and we continue to get incredible support. So we just want to really quick and quickly thank our judges. Gina Martinez, the CEO of La Nube. Okay, she wasn't able to come. Ms. Iris Lopez from 93.1 Kiss, co-host and founder of Mihah Yes You Can. Everyone knows Iris. Local artist Juan Ornalis. Local artist and photographer Marcus Ray. Our official El Paso Chihuahua mascot, Chico. And our final judge, who was unable to be here, but is here in spirit, Paydirt Pete, official UTEP mascot. The last thing I want to say just really quickly is that along with all of these, with the certificate, we also received donations from some really great community. Raising Canes, we received, we want to thank. Wendy's, we want to thank. El Paso Chihuahuas, we want to thank. La Nube, we want to thank. And Mihah Yes You Can, I'm sorry, Mihah Yes You Can, we want to thank. And our two local artists donated some really beautiful items, Juan Ornalis and Marcus Ray. Thank you. Thank you so much. And last but not least, I want to thank my two staff members who do this every two years. It's a lot harder than you probably think it is. Melissa Martin and Paulo Argire. Stand up, stand up. These guys really go out, they print, they make sure all of the booklets are ready, they contact the judges, they do everything. So without them, we would not be able to do that. So thank you, everyone, and I think we'll have pictures, and that's.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for everything, as you saw, all the things that have to take place. And for all of you, what a great honor to be able to, 160-plus entries, and to be able to be here at this point in time. Very thankful for that. I had the opportunity to walk in when the judges were there at the end, oh my God, they looked like it was difficult for them.
It was, it was.
It was so competitive.
My staff reminded me, I apologize, I forgot, we made a quick video of all of the entries that we'd like to run.
Oh, okay, great.
We're not, okay, sorry, there's technical difficulties.
Go online.
So yeah, go online, you can see.
Yeah, go online, and you'll find them.
And you'll find the video with all of the entries. Otherwise, I think.
Yeah, once again, remember, you know, this is a resolution that highlights the importance of voting. We, as elected officials, we're much better off when people go out to vote. We also, when we have challenges, like in state challenges or federal challenges, we want to be in a community that votes, that have a lot of people that come out, and that makes a big difference to whether or not they're going to listen to us. If we're a community that doesn't vote, we don't get a lot of attention in the state or federal level. So thank you, Lisa, for everything that you do. Good luck on your 2026 elections. I know it's a little more complicated, but once again, one more round of applause for this incredible.
All right, if you guys want to hold it here.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I mean, there are just so many.
One, two.
One, two, three.
Did I get one with the shirt?
I guess you can.
Girl power.
You guys have the shirts.
Can you do this?
All girls, we did it. Ready? One, two, three. Mihah Yes You Can.
being named Conference USA Coach of the Year and for his exceptional leadership and dedication to the success of the UTEP volleyball program.
Whereas the arrival of Coach Ben Wallace in 2018 ushered in a run of unprecedented And whereas on November 15, 2025, the minors defeated FIU 3-0 at Memorial Gym to clinch a share of their first-ever Conference USA regular season championship. Whereas the minors made their first-ever NCAA tournament appearance in 2024, and whereas the minors earned a second straight at large bid to the NCAA tournament on November 30, 2025, garnering the number six seed and matching with North Carolina in Madison, Wisconsin. And whereas the UTEP volleyball program has racked up an astounding 52 victories over the last two seasons with only 10 losses. Whereas during that two-year span, the minors have been dominant force in Conference USA, posting a record of 31 and 3 in regular season league play. Whereas UTEP's 2025 team accomplishments include winning WKU 3-0 on October 25 to snap the Hilltoppers 100-match Conference USA regular season win streak. Whereas UTEP volleyball program is firmly entrenched amongst the nation's elite programs. Whereas the UTEP volleyball team continues to thrill El Pasoans, posting a 25-4 record at Memorial Gym over the last two years while averaging 1,624 fans per match. Now therefore, be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court hereby recognize and proudly honors Coach Ben Wallace and the UTEP volleyball program for a two-year run of exceptional play and for representing El Paso with pride, honor, and excellence. Signed this eighth day of December 2025.
We have a motion to approve by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Welcome. Welcome. Who's going to be our? Can we hear that music again?
Thank you guys so much. Ben is, of course, a very busy man and wishes that he could be here. He's actually on an all-region call right now for the whole entire NCAA. So he's out there voting for all-region players with other top NCAA volleyball coaches. So he wishes he could be here, and he's obviously honored to receive this award, as well as our whole entire team. We're incredibly proud of this year's effort, obviously last year as well. And we've got a great group of young ladies behind us that does all the work, and us as coaches just kind of get to sit back and watch them shine. And we're very proud of getting to represent the city of El Paso always on a national stage everywhere we go, including in Madison over the weekend. And obviously, would have wished for a better result, but we're very proud of the season that these guys put up, and especially the seniors that played their last college volleyball games. We're really proud of them and their efforts over the past four and five years, and just really, really proud to be UTEP minors and represent El Paso and get to wear the logo across our chest. And a lot of people used to not know what the pick was or what UTEP was, but they're starting to recognize it as far as on a volleyball stage goes, and that's, that makes us really proud when we get to go places, and they are finally starting to recognize the work that we're putting in here. So I wouldn't want to work for anyone other than Ben Wallace. I wish he was here to be able to talk to you guys, too. But we're just, we're just all really proud, and thank you very much for having us. And we were proud to receive this last year. We've got the resolution from last year hanging in our brand-new locker room, and we'll be proud to put this one right next to it. So thank you guys for having us.
Well, thank you so much. This is, you know, every time you put an El Paso on the map, we go from what people believe we are to who we really are, and it's individuals like yourselves. And I have to always say that now you have a certain responsibility, when you go through that kind of experience, there's, I think, some responsibility to help others. You saw the six young ladies that were here for that artwork. Whereas Mihah Yes You Can, here you have them. I mean, it's just an amazing opportunity for El Paso. Thank you for putting us on the map. Continued success to each and every one of you, and Ben, I know that, please let him know that we really, really appreciate what he does and the work that's put in, but to every, all the staff. And also, don't forget that you're here because of your parents and what they do for each and every one of you. And so always be blessed that you're here in this opportunity. And there he is. And there he is. Well, thank you once again, and we'll take, we'll take a picture with all of you, and thank you for honoring El Paso. Thank you.
Which of you are seniors?
I'm sorry.
Who are the seniors? Well, thank you all for your participation in the program, and appreciate your help.
Yes. But we're just all really proud and thank you very much for having us. We were proud to receive this last year. We've got the resolution from last year hanging in our brand-new locker room and we'll be proud to put this one right next to it. So thank you guys for having us.
Well, thank you so much. This is... You know, every time you put El Paso on the map, we go from what people believe we are to who we really are. And it's individuals like yourselves. And I have to always say that now you have a certain responsibility. When you go through that kind of experience, there's, I think, some responsibility to help others. You saw the six young ladies that were here for that artwork. Whereas Mija, yes, you can. Here you have them. I mean, it's just an amazing opportunity for El Paso. Thank you for putting us on the map. Continued success to each and every one of you. And Ben, I know that, please let him know that we really, really appreciate what he does and the work that's put in, but to every, all the staff. And also, don't forget that you're here because of your parents and what they do for each and every one of you. And so always be blessed that you're here in this opportunity. And there he is. And there he is. Well, thank you once again, and we'll take a picture with all of you. And thank you for honoring El Paso. Thank you.
Which of you are seniors? Who are the seniors? Well, thank y'all for your participation in the program and appreciate y'all.
Yeah, we're gonna have you introduce yourselves if you don't mind just going in and letting us know what class you're in and your name, please. We'll start.
I am Alexis and... What was that question? Oh, I am a junior.
Thank you.
I'm Mackenzie and I'm a freshman.
Well...
I'm Kai and I'm a senior.
Thank you. You can clap, okay? There's no...
I'm Lavina and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Ellen, I'm a freshman.
I'm Jordan and I'm a sophomore.
Welcome.
I'm Kalia and I'm a junior.
Okay, we're gonna do a one clap.
I'm Lauren and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Danica Washington and I'm a senior.
My name's Torrance Losi and I'm a senior.
I'm Landry and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Sarah and I'm a senior.
My name is Hannah and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Maddie and I'm a senior.
I'm Emma and I'm a junior.
Wasn't sure there.
Hi, my name is Sydney and I'm a freshman.
Hi, my name's Lexi and I'm a freshman.
Wow, it's a young group. Who's missing? Who's missing? Come on in, come on in.
My name's Alex and I'm a GA.
Okay, gentlemen, you... We want to know who you are.
I'm Nick and I'm assistant coach.
I'm also Lexi and I'm an assistant coach.
My name is Dale Brown and I'm the sport admin for volleyball.
Hi, I'm Liliana of Aldis Pino, I'm their sports information director.
Missing any one? Okay, thank you.
And for those of you that are staying for next year's program, no pun intended, but go kill it.
And you're a very young team, as I could see. My goodness, we've got a long ways to go. Thank you.
I don't think maybe we should get behind...
Item 5D, approve and adopt a resolution declaring December 8, 2025 as El Paso Executive Women's Lions Club Appreciation Day in El Paso County, Texas.
You want to come on up and... You're gonna have... Yeah?
Is up here first? That'd be okay? Can we reread the agenda once I get everybody up here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Approve and adopt a resolution declaring December 8, 2025 as El Paso Executive Women's Lions Club Appreciation Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Okay, we're ready.
Okay. Okay. Where are we? Okay, I'll read the resolution.
Well, I mean, yeah. Okay, sorry.
Okay. Whereas a group of professional women decided to form a lions club dedicated to empowering women and supporting our great community. On October 14, 2013, the El Paso Executive Women's Lions Club was formed and chartered under Lions Club International and Texas District 2T3. Whereas the El Paso Executive Women's Lions Club was founded by Lion Betsy Nojos Castillo, who currently continues to serve the club as its membership chair. Whereas Lions Club International each year serves millions of people worldwide. Last year, from July 1st to 2023 through June 30th, 2024, more than 420 million people were helped all over the world thanks to the unwavering commitment of the more than 1.4 million lions around the world. Whereas the El Paso Executive Women's Lions Club has conducted numerous local events, including helping our children to get much-needed school supplies, supporting our vulnerable neighbors, the elderly women, children, and the justice involved to meet their food and basic needs, assisting the homeless with blankets and toiletries, assisting our local animal services agency by walking its sheltered dogs, assisting the services of TNR to trap and neuter cats and control their population, supporting financially and with labors of love the Children of Grief Center, El Paso's Fighting Hunger, the Rescue Mission, the Opportunity Center, the Salvation Army, NAMI, Centro San Vicente, and the Alzheimer's Association, and numerous other community organizations, and by supporting the goals of LCI, the District 2T3, serving individuals facing cancer, diabetes, vision challenges, as well as numerous environmental efforts through the area cleanups and recycling. Whereas the El Paso Executive Women's Lions Club has partnered with the El Paso Veterans and Writers Association to support veterans and their families by distributing snacks at VA facilities, providing meals to displaced veterans, welcoming and returning our military, and supplying essential items to veterans and military families. The EPVRA deeply appreciates your support in our annual veterans' food drives. Whereas the El Paso Executive Women's Lions Club supports El Paso County's denomination of Veterans Capital of the USA and will do its best to ensure this great initiative continues to grow and continues its support all over El Paso veterans. Now therefore, it be resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court hereby declare December 8, 2025 as El Paso Executive Women's Lions Club Appreciation Day. Sign this 8th day of December, 2025.
We have a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Coronado.
I'm very proud...
The voting is open.
Get the vote. Here we go.
Motion carries.
I'm sorry. It's been a long...
Daryl is still always like, okay, let's do this. Welcome, Daryl.
We've got work to do.
Welcome, Daryl.
I'm very proud to announce that I am also a lady lion. So they have patiently put up with me and my craziness and my ideas, but they're an awesome team. I have never seen a more dedicated group of ladies in my entire life who have such a goal of supporting our community. Even I have a hard time trying to track everything they're doing. And they are outstanding. They are truly deserving of this recognition, and we look forward to working with them more. And we would like you guys to know that they're here, they're very effective, they're awesome. So without further ado, Ms. Betsy, the membership, the founding member.
Thank you, Betsy.
We're excited to be here, first of all. Thank you for having us.
Welcome.
I would like to thank the commissioners and county judge. And also with us today is past District Governor Patsy Aikum, who's decided to be with us.
Welcome, Betsy.
As well, thank you, as well as PDG Orlando Ortega. And thank you, Daryl, for doing Rodriguez. I'm sorry, Orlando Rodriguez. Good morning, county judge, county commissioners, and distinguished guests. On behalf of the El Paso Executive Women's Lions Club, I am honored and deeply grateful to accept this resolution recognizing the formation of our Lions Club. We are humbled that our county has chosen to acknowledge this moment in our club's history, a moment that reflects not just the beginning of an organization, but the beginning of service commitment and community impact. The lion motto is "We Serve." Those two words guide everything we do. With this recognition, you affirm the values we stand for, which is compassion, bold in tourism, the belief that when people come together and achieve a purpose, incredible things can happen. When we were newly chartered in December of 2013, our hearts were full of big plans. We looked forward to supporting local needs from vision health initiatives to youth leadership, community partnerships, helping our veterans, and responding wherever there is a need. We are here to work together with local leaders, businesses, nonprofits, and every resident who wants to make a difference. What makes our club extraordinary is not just the work we do, but the heart behind it. Each member brings strength, dedication, and a spirit of service that defines who we are and what we stand for. Our community feels the difference because of the passion we bring to every project and every act of kindness. It has been a complete honor to serve alongside these remarkable women, and I look forward to our continuing journey and building an even stronger legacy of service, working collaboratively for the betterment of El Paso. To the county commissioners, thank you for welcoming us and for believing in our mission. Your support energizes us and reinforces our commitment to serve with passion and integrity. To our fellow lions, thank you for stepping up to serve. Your willingness to give your time, your ideas, and your talent shows that leadership begins with action. And finally, to our community, we are here for you. We are ready to listen, and we are ready to help and ready to serve. Together, we will make a lasting impact. Together, we will continue to serve and prove that whether it's a senior or a lion. Sincerely, Betsy.
Thank you. Beautiful words. Thank you so much.
And at this time, we've got our current president that's holding us all together, Debbie Fierro.
Welcome.
Excuse my voice. On behalf of the El Paso Executive Lions Club, we extend our sincere gratitude to you, judge and commissioners, for recognizing our service. Your support affirms our mission to uplift the community. It inspires us to continue making a positive impact and reflects our commitment to compassion, dignity, and service to those in most need. We are honored by this acknowledgement, and we thank you for standing up with us.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. You want to introduce yourselves, please? You want to introduce yourselves?
Um, I'm...
You could come up to the mic. Thank you, Judge.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us. I am Associate Judge Dolores Reyes with the county, but I'm also currently serving as the Lions Secretary for this year. Thank you so much.
And we could say our very own.
Good morning, Maria Salas-Mendoza. I'm chief of your Eighth Court of Appeals and a chartered member of this club, very proud of our work in the community.
Great, another county employee.
Good morning. My name is Christine Seelig, and I'm proud to stand as the second vice president.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Denise Morales, and I'm the immediate past president.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Zambrano. I'm a member, just a regular member, but I am a retiree from the county for 31 years of service, and it was an honor.
Thank you for your service. Thank you.
I am Christina Gonzalez, and I am the treasurer for this year.
Thank you. We're gonna do the one clap? We're gonna get...
Good morning, Magdalena Delgado Teuton. I am part of the board.
Hello, I'm Nancy Diaz. I'm a chartered member, and I'm also a firefighter, and I'm very honored to be part of this group.
Welcome.
Miriam Guerrero, I'm also a member.
From Workforce Solutions. Hi, Patsy.
Good morning. My name is Patsy Aikum. I'm a past District Governor and very proud to be their guiding lion.
Thank you, thank you. Did we get everybody? Orlando.
Hi, I'm a past District Governor, Orlando Rodriguez. I'm also president and publisher of Spotlight News.
Well, thank you. We got everybody, right? Well, thank you for everything that you do. I mean, I keep saying that because of organizations like yourselves, it takes a lot of pressure from the county. You know, when the county is outside of our county is not responding, it sort of falls on us. So anything that you do, you're actually helping the county government be able to do their job better. So we thank each and every one of you for doing that and wishing the best for each and every... And I've gotten to be involved one way or the other, and I've seen how powerful it is for what you do. So thank you. On behalf of myself and our commissioners, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your... Thank you. Thank you. Wes. Thanks, Wes. Thank you for the work. Thank you for the work. Wes. Wes is... Judge Oliver. Thank you for the work. Wes. 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 Wes.
has this year alone coordinated multi-agency efforts to maintain public safety during some of the county's most high-impact events, including the Fourth of July weekend and the annual Turkey Run at Red Sands. And whereas during the Fourth of July Safe Streets operation, the sheriff's office organized and unified the efforts of multiple law enforcement agencies, including the El Paso Police Department, the Socorro Police Department, Horizon City Police Department, Clint Police Department, Anthony Police Department, San Luis San Diego Marshal's Office, Texas Department of Public Safety, and the offices of El Paso County Constables Frank Almada, Precinct 1, Louis Aguilar, Precinct 4, and Javier Garcia, Precinct 6. And whereas the sheriff's office deployed 168 units across the county during the Fourth of July weekend with dedicated patrol coverage in each municipality to deter impaired driving, reduce collisions, and ensure a visible safety presence during one of El Paso's busiest and most dangerous holiday periods. And whereas, for the first time, the sheriff's office stationed deputies inside Red Sands, an area that draws thousands of visitors despite being privately owned and lacking formal infrastructure, during the Fourth of July weekend, deploying approximately 30 deputies equipped with four-by-four units, ATVs, lighting towers, and onsite medics to proactively prevent accidents and protect the surrounding Precinct 1 neighborhoods. And whereas during the annual Turkey Run at Red Sands, the sheriff's office once again conducted proactive operations, deploying more than 40 units within the off-road recreation area to prevent dangerous accidents, respond rapidly to emergencies, and safeguard nearby neighborhoods. And whereas during both the Fourth of July weekend and the Turkey Run, the sheriff's office prioritized public education and community outreach to help residents and visitors understand how to stay safe in and around Red Sands. And whereas, these large-scale operations exemplify the county's ongoing commitment to public safety, and they highlight the sheriff's office's ability to mobilize significant resources, build strong inter-agency partnerships, and address high-traffic, high-risk areas such as Red Sands. And whereas, due to these coordinated strategic efforts, the county recorded zero fatalities and zero serious accidents at Red Sands during Fourth of July and the Thanksgiving holiday events, an extraordinary demonstration of effective planning and multi-agency cooperation. And whereas, these proactive deployments mark a major step toward improving safety in an area that draws thousands of visitors despite lacking formal public infrastructure or jurisdictional oversight, reflecting the sheriff's office's commitment to protecting families in and around Precinct 1. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Commissioners hereby recognizes Sheriff Oscar Ugarte and the El Paso County Sheriff's Office for their outstanding leadership, professionalism, and safety operations throughout 2025, which significantly contributed to the well-being and protection of residents across El Paso County, especially those living in and visiting Precinct 1. Signed this eighth day of December 2025.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Butler, seconded by Judge Samaniego. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Welcome.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners. I'm Soria, Deputy Chief for the Law Enforcement Bureau. We know public safety is expensive, but this administration does listen to the concerns of the community and the court, and we put these operations in place, and we are happy to report that during these operations in our areas of responsibility, we had no shootings, major accidents, or fatalities. We also like to thank Constables Precinct 1, 4, and 6, the Texas Parks Wildlife Department, the Montana Vista Fire Rescue. We continue to work hard to make this a safe community, and we thank the court for your continued support. Additionally, I'll also like to thank the commanders, Lieutenant Perales, that worked very hard on this logistics, as you can imagine, putting this together, making sure that everybody's in their right places, everybody's getting fed, everybody's getting breaks, while, you know, making sure that everybody's having a safe and time during these events. So I'd like to also thank Constable Garcia for his tremendous support towards these operations. And again, thank you ultimately for all your wonderful support in getting and putting these operations together, safety operations.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Go ahead. The constable is everywhere.
Good morning, Judge. County Commissioners, Javier Garcia, Constable, Precinct 6. Commissioner Butler, thank you for recognizing the sheriff's office and for including the constable's office. It's always our pleasure to go help, you know, keep our community safe and assist the sheriff's office with their patrols, even though it's not one of our duties. We're still peace officers, and it's our pleasure to go out there and keep our community safe. I'd like to thank Sheriff Ugarte and his command staff and all of his supervisors for, you know, including us and letting us go out there and keep our community safe.
Thank you, Constable, for everything that you do. Always, you're always available for anything that we ask for. Go ahead. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ruben Soria. I'm Commander for the Patrol Division. Thank you, Commissioner Butler, for introducing this resolution, for recognizing the sheriff's office along with many other first responders. The operation could have not been a success without everyone's participation. The goal was simple, to show presence so that families can go out there and safely enjoy their holiday, to prevent accidents, shootings, or disasters. This is the beginning of many more operations to come for the safety and well-being of the citizens of this community. And again, thank you for a resolution and your support. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commander?
Welcome.
Good morning. Jerome Washington, Commander, El Paso County Sheriff's Office. Well, you know, in law enforcement, we have a saying, you know, you kind of get dealt with the hands, the cards that you have to play with, right? And in this situation, you know, we would love to have that area in Red Sands kind of just regulated, you know, turned into a state park or something like that, but ultimately, it's not. So our philosophy running up to that and going into the future is that visibility saves lives. So we're hoping that we can continue this with you all's support under the sheriff's leadership to prevent lives. That is our biggest thing. We understand that alcohol and off-roading do not make a good combination, but again, visibility saves lives, and we thank you for your support, and we will continue to do our job. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Yeah. Each one of you that could introduce yourselves.
Just say hello.
Good morning, Alfred Morales. I'm Deputy Sergeant with the El Paso County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you.
Good morning, Court. Judge Lieutenant Perales, also with the sheriff's office. One thing I do want to do, say is recognize the deputies that were inside Red Sands taking care of business. It wasn't only us that were out there. It was also several deputies, several, several of the partners that made this happen. So I want to recognize them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Eduardo Martinez from Precinct 6, Constable's office.
Thank you. I got to be quick on. Just real quick, if you don't mind, I want to personally thank Commissioner Butler. When you said about what's happening, she's the one that's really pushed on this and got everybody together, work with Sheriff Ugarte, constables, and everyone else, we thank you very much for that and for that continued. And when you talk about what's going to happen in the future, it's in good hands with the Commissioner. I think she'll find a way to make sure that we make it more of a recreational place that we can control. And I just want to give you thanks because I'm very privileged sometimes when we talk to companies that are coming in. And there's a couple of things that if we didn't have it, we have great people. They always talk about that, but the first thing that attracts them to our community is we're one of the safest communities. And people don't realize, when you see like Meta come in, give yourselves credit, because they come in a little like, are you sure you're the safest community? They come in a little leery, and then they realize we have this great, safe community. So a lot of the reasons that we bring great companies in is because of being one of the safest counties in the United States. So we thank you for that. I hope that you realize that you're contributing to the economic development by being the way you are. So thank you. And thanks you once again, Commissioner Butler. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. I appreciate that. I wanted to also recognize somebody who's behind the scenes but deserves recognition. That's Priscilla Contreras, and she is the Public Information Officer for the sheriff's office. A lot of what has transpired with these two major holidays has also included a public education campaign, and Priscilla has been the one driving that, and she's there at Red Sands documenting it. And I think that's really important as well, because we need to change the narrative about Red Sands. We need to be able to Google Red Sands and see that it's a family-friendly, safe environment. And the more that we can continue these operations and prevent and reduce accidents and fatalities, the more that narrative will change to the better, and Priscilla is a key part of that. So thank you, Priscilla. She's not going to come forward, but thank you.
Can I?
No.
There she is.
At least come, can be part of the picture.
She's always hiding somewhere, but thank you. Absolutely.
And then I do want to mention that the deputies and everybody who is involved in these operations worked on a holiday. They sacrificed time with their families, with their children, and I know it's not easy to do that. But again, I want to reinforce that what they did, what you all have done, has saved lives, and I hope that you know that, that you're making a difference, you're serving the public, you're saving lives with every operation and with your presence out there. So thank you very much for everything that you do.
And I love that call. I get that call from Sheriff Ugarte. No casualties. The next day, it's so exciting. I could see in his voice, and of course, Priscilla there, sleepless nights, and all of you. So a very heartfelt thank you to each and every one of you. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and take a picture.
Item 5E, I'm sorry, item 5F, approve and adopt a resolution celebrating the life of Ms. Estine Davis and recognizing her many contributions to El Paso.
Commissioner Stout.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I have the honor of being able to read this resolution into the record. We're joined here today by Michael Davis, Ms. Estine's son. But I want to start off by saying that some individuals really leave a legacy that is so deep that it becomes woven into the fabric of a community. And Ms. Estine Davis was one of those rare figures here in El Paso. For more than eight decades, she helped shape the cultural, civic, and historic landscape of South Central El Paso through her leadership, creativity, and unwavering commitment to service. From her early years in El Paso, in the segregated schools here, to becoming one of the first Black women to own and operate her own business in our region, Ms. Estine broke barriers with grace and determination through her iconic barber shop, her mentorship of young people, her work preserving Black history, and her involvement in civic and community initiatives. She became a pillar of strength, pride, and progress for generations. So I'm going to read the resolution, and then we'll hear from Michael. The resolution states, whereas Ms. Estine died peacefully on November 10, 2025, at age 92, and whereas Ms. Estine Davis was born in Troy, Texas, on December 5, 1932, to Clark and Beulah Hill. Her family moved to El Paso when she was six years old, and she attended the segregated Douglas Elementary and Douglas High School, which at the time was the only school Black children were allowed to attend in El Paso. And whereas Ms. Estine moved to Tyler, Texas at 18 for barber school, then returned to El Paso to work at Fort Bliss. In 1964, she joined Eastside Barber Shop, owned by her godfather, Mr. Roscoe Marlin, and took ownership the following year. Known as Ms. Estine, she cut hair for over 62 years at 106 North Piedras Street. And whereas, she was one of the first Black women to own and operate her own business in El Paso, Texas, styling diverse clients from Harlem Globetrotters and entertainers like Little Richard and Earl Grant, to professional wrestlers, college athletes, countless soldiers, including Army General Officers, and everyday citizens who frequented the streets of Piedras and Alameda. And whereas, Estine's barber shop welcomed visitors with a sense of history, especially through her Wall of Fame, which featured significant achievements by Black Americans from various backgrounds. The wall included 1966 National Basketball Championship Team from Texas Western College, now UTEP, who received complimentary haircuts. And whereas, Ms. Estine was an active member of the Shiloh Baptist Church in El Paso for over 82 years, supervising and mentoring many young boys and girls as director trainer of the Children's Usher Board, ages 8 to 12, for over 65 years, organizing the Easter Parade each year at El Paso National Bank. Ms. Davis was also a member of Mission Society Number Two. And whereas, Ms. Estine was the first Black person to graduate from Mannequin Manor Finishing and Modeling School, Inc., in El Paso, founded Estine's Fashion Model Agency, which was the sole Black modeling company in the Southwest for more than 30 years, and founded the annual Miss Black El Paso Southwest Scholarship Pageant. And whereas, Ms. Estine was a dedicated community activist in El Paso's Black community, designing floats and joining the Thanksgiving Parade from 1982 to 2021. She was active with the NAACP's El Paso Chapter and co-founded the McCall Neighborhood Center in 1983. As President of the El Paso Chapter of the Ninth and Tenth Horse Cavalry Association, she worked to preserve the legacy of the Buffalo Soldiers. And whereas, for over 60 years, Ms. Estine worked with city, county, and statewide leadership on numerous transportation, infrastructure, housing, commerce, and civil initiatives for the South Central El Paso area, a community that held a special place in her heart. There are numerous books, articles, and formal essays written about Ms. Estine Davis and her accomplishments, to include "Wherever My People Chanced to Dwell" by Dr. Marcel C. Daley and Bordersine, "A Dream Fulfilled at Estine's Eastside Barber Shop After All These Years" by Eddie Delgado, 29th of April 2010. And whereas, Ms. Estine was a charter member of ETA Iota Zeta Amake of the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority. And whereas, following her retirement on 25 September 2022, Ms. Estine envisioned a renewed economic future for Eastside Central El Paso. This vision led in January 2023 to the establishment of the nonprofit organization Eastside Central Coalition, which aims to expand business opportunities within both government and commercial sectors in the Piedras-Alameda Corridor. And whereas, she was preceded in death by her parents, Clark and Beulah Hill, sisters Viola, Arabelle, Privilella, and Esther, brothers Clark Jr., Ezel, and Boston, and her son William Isaac Davis Jr. And whereas, she is survived by her son Michael E.P. Davis, Denise, sister-in-law, Amelia Hill Johnson, five grandchildren, Tracy, Tia, James, Marquez, Sarah, and Antonio, five great-grandchildren, Jada, Miles, Katrel, Atrey, and Rain, one great-grandson, Emmett, four nieces, and three four nieces, and three nephews, a host of other relatives and friends. And now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court extend its warmest condolences to the family of Ms. Estine Davis and recognizes her as a trailblazer and force to be reckoned with. Signed this 8th day of December, 2025, the Honorable County Commissioners Court.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Stout, second by Judge Samaniego. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Welcome, Michael.
Thank you, thank you all, thank you very much. Over the last five days, I've had to tell everyone to keep it short in the different venues that I've participated in when talking and honoring my mother, Ms. Estine Davis. And so, I want to keep mine short as well. I am honored and blessed that I had Ms. Estine Davis as my mother, what's such a role model to not only the Black community, but the entire community that she loves so much. She's an icon in the biggest sense, she's only 5'2 1/2" and 90 pounds. But she was such an energy, such a dynamic individual. It's big shoes for us to step into. And we hope through the Eastside Central Coalition and all of the members and people that live in the community, that we're able to do just a few of the things that she was able to do in the 90-plus years that she was on this planet in El Paso. So, I thank everyone for the honor. And I know she's upstairs arguing with God.
No doubt.
And God just told her to go down as an usher and stand at the gate with her white gloves on. And she's probably doing that with great, great professionalism. So, thank you all very much.
And Michael, thank you so much. It was such a beautiful ceremony and the privilege to speak. And in reality, I was speaking on behalf of Commissioner Stout because he's been so involved. I'm sure, I mean, he wasn't able to be there, but I really was representing you and what you've done in that community. And I'm so glad the young people here, if you look her up, and one of the things I said, you know, she is going to survive the test of time. You know, she'll go forward and we'll remember her. You won't get to meet her, but you need to see her as a role model because I've never seen something, everything that she's gone through. And I was saying that anybody that comes out of Douglas, something happens, they're like on fire. They come out and they go through a lot of adversity, but she's turned adversity into success every step of the way. Everything was going to be new, everything was a challenge, everything. And she was able to move forward. So, we're very thankful for her memory. And we, as I've said, we got to figure a way how to keep her memory going as much as we can in the community for young people like we have today. So, Michael, thank you for allowing me to be there. And Commissioner Stout, thank you for your help on promoting that area and what she wants in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judge. And Michael, do you want to come up and take a picture with the resolution? But I just want to say thanks to Michael for continuing her legacy and continuing the advocacy. It's obvious that the apple didn't fall far from the tree. And he's been a strong advocate for his community and her community. And I'm looking forward to continue, continuing to working with you to continue pushing her legacy and making sure that people do not forget the work that she did in this community. And she will continue to live in our memories forever.
Thank you.
Item 5G. A proven adopter resolution to recognize the efforts of Margarita Perez, Mari Ornelas Alberto Perez, and all of the supporters and organizers of El Paso Trails for Toys, and to designate December 13, 2025, as El Paso Trails for Toys Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioner Olgin.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning again, everyone. It is such an honor for me to be able to recognize this organization and all of the incredible work that they do. For those of you all that may know Margy and Alberto and Mari, they, like so many people who do incredible work in our community, they don't want credit for it. They do it from the bottom of their heart because they want to help in whatever way that they can. But we felt that it was very important to honor the three of them and all of the volunteers that help with everything that they do from food drives, Thanksgiving basket, gifts. And they're not just a blessing to the Socorro community, but they provide gifts to children internationally as well. So, I know you don't like being in the spotlight, Margy, but I really felt that it was important that everyone in our community knew about the wonderful work that you all do. So, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution into the record, and then we'd love to hear from the three of you. And we have a couple of our elected officials. Mayor Cruz from the City of Socorro, thank you for being with us. Constable Garcia, thank you also for all of the support that you provide to Margy. So, whereas Christmas Trails for Toys is a volunteer-driven effort that mobilizes families, clubs, and local businesses to collect toys and essential items for children and families in need across El Paso County and beyond, often organizing car show benefits and community drives to power its giving. And whereas, through these community events, Christmas Trails for Toys and its partners have gathered toys, raised funds, and assembled care packages at local venues to benefit under-resourced children and families while building a culture of neighbor-to-neighbor service across the region. And whereas, the organization's service has included international and cross-border generosity, such as the donation of uniforms and 20 pairs of eyeglasses in Venezuela in 2022 and 2023, as well as local and regional outreach, including 500 pairs of new boots from Cowtown Boots delivered in January, 2023, to Socorro Area Schools, Churches, and Daycares within the Socorro Independent School District Community, and 100 toys delivered to Casas Grandes Chihuahua for Christmas in 2022. And whereas, this community effort is animated by the leadership and dedication of Margarita, Margy Perez, Alberto Perez, and Mari Ornelas, whose consistent organizing, fundraising, logistics, and hands-on service have inspired volunteers and partners across El Paso County to join in the mission of helping families during the holidays and throughout the year. And whereas, Christmas Trails for Toys extends heartfelt thanks to the many volunteers, donors, small businesses, faith partners, school communities, venue hosts, and civic allies whose contributions, large and small, make this work possible and multiply the impact for children and families across our borderland community. And whereas, in recognition of exemplary community leadership, Margarita Perez and her organization have been honored with the following awards and recognitions. Telemundo, March 2025, Mujeres Imparables Award. Mujeres Con sentido, March 2024 Award. Constable's Office Precinct 6, 2023 Award. Serna Elementary, May 2023 Award. Socorro ISD, 2023 Volunteer Education Empowerment Award. CTE Diamond Gallery, 2023 Award. KTSM, 2023 Remarkable Women Award. KINT Univision 26, March 2022, Rompiendo Barreras. And whereas, local media and community storytellers have highlighted Margarita Perez's tireless advocacy for families, underscoring her determination to help those most in need and to rally our community to action through Christmas Trails for Toys. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court in grateful recognition of Christmas Trails for Toys generous service to children and families, in appreciation of the leadership of Margarita Perez, Alberto Perez, and Mari Ornelas, and with thanks to every volunteer, donor, partner, and friend who helps make this mission possible, that December 13th, 2025 be hereby declared as Christmas Trails for Toys Day. In official recognition thereof, the Commissioners Court hereby affixes their signature this 8th day of December, 2025.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Olgin, second by Judge Samaniego. The voting is open.
Welcome.
Commissioner Stout, thank you. Motion carries.
Good morning, Judge Samaniego, Commissioners. Christmas Trails for Toys has been in existence since 2003. We serve the community, we serve underprivileged children from mainly Socorro, Texas, SISD children. But we also serve Mexico, South America, and we do it from the bottom of our hearts. Christmas Trails for Toys, we give the children and make them smile. Christmas toys, Christmas goodies. We provide turkey baskets, medical items, dental items. And, you know, we really thank you for the acknowledgement of all our hard work and dedication. Here's a little something that we would like to present to you for your dedication to our community.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Beautiful. Thank you, Marlene, thank you so much.
Good morning, County Judge, County Commissioners.
Once again.
Once again, Javier Garcia, Constable Precinct 6.
Thank you, Constable.
I was asked to accompany Ms. Margy Perez this morning, and I'm here to show my appreciation and my support for her organization and tell her just thank you, Mari, Albert, Margy, all your family, for always bringing smiles and providing for my hometown of Socorro. I grew up in that area, and I know the needs of that community. You know, so thank you so much for always being there for my community and for always allowing my office to help you. You know, if you go to her house during Thanksgiving and Christmas, she sacrifices her house because it's full of toys, it's full of food, it's full of turkeys, and all to help out the Socorro community. So, once again, thank you so much for everything you do. Commissioner Olgin, thank you for drafting up this resolution and recognizing such a wonderful organization.
Thank you, Constable.
Mayor Rudy Cruz, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, County Judge and Commissioners. First and foremost, just to echo what Constable Garcia said, I've witnessed it myself. Ms. Margy, along with her sister and her husband, have been pillars of our community. If you were to look up the definition of what a pillar for the community means, you'd see a photograph of these three individuals. They're a small group, but it's a big impact that they make in the City of Socorro, such an underserved population. And just the work that they do in Socorro, and not only that, but in other countries, it's something that should go, you know, just recognized. And well, Margy, I know, whereas Margy, Ms. Perez, I'm just so thrilled to see you recognize that you've been the steady heart of this community for so long, and you're always there to lift others up. Your strength and kindness are truly unmatched. So, cheers to you, Margy, on this amazing achievement. And just want to let the Commissioners Court know, as well as those in attendance and those watching, that we need more people like Margy in our community because it's very difficult, and I'll take my hat off to say this out of respect for Margy and Christmas Trails for Toys, but it's very difficult as elected officials because we can only see and do so much. But with the help of people like this and organizations like this, it's just so impactful. So, we try and help out as much as we can as elected officials. But Margy, today's your day, and today's a special day for Christmas Trails for Toys. And for that, City of Socorro is forever grateful. Thank you so much.
And Mayor Rudy Cruz, thank you for what you do and the support you provide to our Commissioner. It's really, we're very appreciative, thank you.
Again, thank you so much for acknowledging our work. And December 13th will be our toy giveaway in the City of Socorro. And we will be having a small parade. And then at Peter Piper's will be our toy giveaway for the children in the SISD area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Introduce yourselves, just introduce yourselves, just let us know who you are.
I'm Mari Ornelas, and I have been a Socorro resident for the past 65 years and very proud to serve my community.
Thank you.
Alberto Perez.
Thank you. Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So, Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I just want to remind everyone, Margy is still collecting toys for the toy giveaway that she just mentioned that will be taking place there in Socorro on the 13th this coming Saturday morning. So, if anyone has any toys that they would like to donate to Christmas Trails for Toys, please reach out to my office, and we will gladly get them to Margy. There is a lot of need in the community, as we all know. And that's why we are particularly thankful for all of the incredible work that the three of you do every single day. Thank you.
Item 5H. A proven adopter resolution recognizing and honoring the legacy of Dr. Pedro Galaviz for his remarkable contributions as an educator, mentor, and community leader during his time as superintendent of the Canotillo Independent School District.
Commissioner Coronado.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. This is really not just an honor, but a pleasure to be able to present this resolution to the court.
proud to serve my community.
Thank you. Alberto Perez. Thank you. Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I just want to remind everyone, Margie is still collecting toys for the toy giveaway that she just mentioned, that will be taking place there in Socorro on the 13th, this coming Saturday morning. So if anyone has any toys that they would like to donate to Christmas Trails for Toys, please reach out to my office, and we will gladly get them to Margie. There is a lot of need in the community, as we all know, and that's why we are particularly thankful for all of the incredible work that the three of you do every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Good morning. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Again, thank you so much for acknowledging our work. And December 13th will be our toy giveaway in the city of Socorro, and we are, we will be having a small parade. And then at Peter Piper's will be our toy giveaway for the children in the SISD area. Thank you. Thank you. Introduce yourselves. Just introduce yourselves. Just let us know who you are and...
I'm Mari Ornelas, and I have been a Socorro resident for the past 65 years, and very proud to serve my community.
Thank you. Alberto Perez. Thank you. Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up. And like I said, Mayor, thank you for that partnership that we have with the rural mayors and being able to do as much as we can at every different community. So Commissioner Olgin, back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out also to our Commissioner Olgin and everything she does in that area. I mean, I know she gets a lot of support for anything that comes up.
Muchas gracias, muchas gracias. You know, you know what's really cool is that you're Commissioner Coronado's biggest fan, and then he's your biggest fan. So I just, what a person to be able to, that understands Canotio. And so his words come from the heart, and so we thank you for everything that you've done, for being a role model. You know, we always have difficulties in the schools, and somehow you've been able to evolve into all these challenges and continue to be a role model. So we thank you for everything that you do, and obviously the relationship you have with our great Commissioner is very valuable. No se puede decir Canotio or orange, because you know, he'll jump in right completely. So back to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. Again, Pedro, it's been an honor to have you leading our humble but proud district, Canotio, and all the accomplishments. And we know that the most of all that I can say about him is that he's really student-centered. And he's ingrained ourself, not just in the school system, but in our community, including his family. And so we appreciate everything you do for our community, not just for the students, but our entire community. And we really appreciate you and make you an honorary El Pasoan.
Thank you. If you'll under, Commissioner, a little bit more, if you make your color a little bit more burnt orange, a little today. Well, thank you each and every one of you. We thank you for that, and we'll take a picture with all of you. Thank you.
Item six is public comment. We do have several speakers for public comment. First, we have Mr. Darrell G. Mon.
It's a long day, huh?
Beautiful day.
Beautiful day. Beautiful day to be in the Veterans Capital of the USA.
Yes.
I just want to give an update on food drive. We've been doing well. We already started picking up food donations, everything. Friday, we picked up from the District of Terms office. We also picked up from your box. It was almost full, but we had the help, so we emptied out. We did something this year to kick off our food drive with the city of Socorro, with the, you know, they cut the support from the federal government on the food stamps and everything. And we coordinated with Mayor Rudy Cruz. We went out there and did emergency distribution of food. The APVRI coordinated with him. We distributed over 400 bags of food to the Socorro residents. And we want to thank Mayor Cruz, the Socorro PD, and the City Manager Adriana for their help and cooperation. But I really want you all to just take a moment. Come here. He is like the hardest person to get modest, you know? Do you want me to give Mayor Cruz a big round of applause?
You win beyond the one clap, okay? That's very special.
All that practice for nothing. What he has done out there in Socorro has been amazing, coordinating efforts with the entire county and everything, and Commissioner Gane and everything. All of this has just been really amazing. We appreciate it, the support and everything. We will start picking up the food on December 18th. If you need an earlier pickup, please coordinate with me. If not, we can go out there. Also, the Army Recruiting Command has came in, correction, El Paso Army Recruiting has came in. You can now leave all food at any Army Recruiting station. They're supporting us. A lot of people are kind of supporting us. Group 1-4 has been our major supporter. They're going to be our base operations for the food drive this year. So if you guys want to volunteer and come pass out food, I know you've got a lot on your plate, but we obviously need some help.
Thank you, Darrell. Appreciate that.
Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your partnership. Really appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Darrell.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Our next public comment is from Ms. Elizabeth Crawford.
Welcome, Elizabeth.
Ms. Crawford could not be with us. She sent in her comments. I'll be reading those in.
Okay, thank you, Sister.
From Ms. Elizabeth Crawford, "Good afternoon. I first want to express much appreciation for the courtesy and kindness shown to me when I've had issues calling in. Thank you so much. I often tell my New Jersey friends how I'm often taken aback by the courtesy of El Pasoans. This morning, as I fly to the Midwest, it is my hope to be there on the day that the EMW abortion center in Lewisville is being demolished to make room for a new hotel construction. We as pro-lifers are thrilled beyond words, thankful to the Lord. Louisville, Kentucky, Indianapolis, Little Rock, Arkansas, and Jackson, Mississippi are four of the cities in the center of our nation where the surgical abortion centers have closed down. In this season, the focus on the incarnation of Jesus, it is fascinating to look at the prophecies of the Christ child. Tucked in a passage written through the prophet Isaiah, spoken to King Azah, is a promise of a sign with its ultimate fulfillment centuries later in the advent of the Lord Jesus. Therefore, the Lord Himself shall give you a sign. Behold, a virgin shall conceive and bear a son, and shall call His name Emmanuel." We often hear Christians in our day speak about the founding fathers of our nation being Christian. Some were, yes, some were Christians, but a number of them were deists. Deism basically teaches God made the earth, wound it up like a clock, and let it go to function completely by natural laws, untouched by divine intervention. Deism. The Bible teaches the exact opposite. Emmanuel means God, with us. God is with His children, even through suffering. Deism is scary and hopeless. Those who support abortion generally embrace this mindset. They reason impossible situation financially, messed up relationship, product of an affair, a baby conceived in rape. Just abort the baby and move on. Yet, the God of the Bible delights in bringing beauty out of the ashes for those who come to Him, desperate for help. God does indeed intervene in the affairs of mankind. In the beautiful words of the carol, "Hark, the herald angels sing. Christ by the highest heaven adored; Christ the everlasting Lord, late in time behold Him come, offspring of the virgin's womb. Veiled in flesh, the Godhead see; hail the incarnate deity. Pleased is man with men to dwell, Jesus our Emmanuel." This is still in the 21st century, the good news of the baby once lying in the manger. There is a God who has lovingly intervened in the history of mankind. Behold, a virgin shall be with child, and shall bring forth a son, and they shall call His name Emmanuel, which being interpreted is God with us, Matthew 1:23. End of public comment.
Thank you.
And finally, Judge, we do have the elections video for the I Voted sticker contest that we'd like to go ahead and play for the court.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Well, amazing entries. My goodness. It's, that would be really tough for the judges.
And that completes, everybody signed up for public comment.
Thank you.
Item seven, county administration, 7A. Receive a presentation, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding federal legislative items and communications with the 119th U.S.
Buenos dias, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Elisa Tamayo, Governmental Affairs Manager. Today with a federal legislative update. I won't take a lot of your time. I know there's a letter also posted on the backup, but I'll just go through the slides real quick to just share a little bit of what has happened with the U.S. 119th Congress over the last So a little reminder about HR 1 and SB 1790, which is, as you might recall, earlier this year, it was Senator Cornyn who introduced Senate Bill 1790 to include reimbursements for border states for immigration enforcement operations. And later in the summer, the budget, HR 1, included some of these provisions. A lot of the Senate Bill 1790 provisions were rolled into HR 1, which is the budget for Congress. And then the, when Senate Bill 1790, before we knew about those provisions rolling into the HR 1 bill, the court directed staff to send letters to our congressional delegation members requesting that these funds be sent directly to counties, following kind of the ARPA model from previous years in lieu of like the state pass-through model. However, during those budget negotiations, these provisions, like I said, were rolled into HR 1, and that is a current budget bill. And so following up with that, we sent, a couple of weeks ago, we sent two different letters to our congressional delegation asking for guidance on how to access those funds from HR 1, to get reimbursed for those border enforcement operations. I am not sure if we've received a response yet or not, but the letters went out, I believe, before Thanksgiving. And I know it was our county attorney, Christina Sanchez, who signed the letters and sent them out. If you have any questions, let us know. But I know we will be following up to see, you know, if we get a response or how we can access those ones. Also, during the NACO visit in February, this could be something to bring up with our congressional delegation to see how we can, like I said, tap into the funds or get some guidance. We haven't seen anything yet, and I know it takes a few months to get that out, but we're working on that. If we could go to the next slide, please. Some updates about the government shutdown. As you know, there not only were a lot of federal employees affected by the shutdown that lasted over 40 days, the longest government shutdown in our history, but also SNAP benefits recipients. You know, they struggled during those month and 10 days. Healthcare access was also impacted. Funding for congressional project funding, funding requests, and all those things were all impacted. Right now, Congress has been funded through a continuing resolution, so it's still, they haven't passed the 12 appropriations bills. They have only passed, I believe, like three of those. So they have until January the 30th to fully pass up all the appropriations, so we don't go on with this continuing resolution funding. There's, part of the government shutdown negotiations included a vote. There was a promise of a vote on healthcare subsidies. There's a short window to extend those enhanced tax credits, what they call the premium tax credits on the Affordable Care Act, before the end of the year. If they expire, then a lot of the healthcare premiums for many people in our community will go up. There is an alternate proposal being floated around. I know that a lot of Republican members are discussing potentially direct health savings account payments for enrollees instead of giving the, these tax credits to the insurers and the marketplace. So there's a lot of negotiations going on right now, which is the reason that we drafted this letter for your consideration that is attached to the backup. Most Affordable Care Act enrollees must sign up before or by December 15th for coverage in the next year, or they would risk being shut out of the market and not have insurance or access to healthcare. There's also a pending proposal by the White House for an Affordable Care Act extension with a lot of limits, but we haven't seen what that looks like. As of yesterday, there's still no public proposal from the White House. All that we know is that there's been ongoing negotiations. So I don't know if we have another slide, or if you have access to the backup. Yes. So the letters, the letters that are attached to the backup toward two senators, John Cornyn and Ted Cruz, asking them for their vote in this, we don't know when the vote is going to happen, but that was a promise to reopen the government, essentially was to have a vote on the enhanced premiums tax credits. The Senate leadership committed to a mid-December vote, so it should be coming up. But House leadership did not hold the same commitment. So that's why the letter would be to our two U.S. senators, basically asking them to, for their vote to approve the extension of this expiring enhanced premiums healthcare, enhanced premium healthcare tax credits for the Affordable Care Act. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if there's any at the moment.
Just Commissioner Butler?
Thank you, Elisa, for the overview. I just had one comment on the letter, the proposed letters to our senators on the Affordable Care Act subsidies. I think it's a good letter. I think it would, it would help if we at least mentioned UMC in there and our county hospital district, and talk about the uncompensated care that they currently, amount they currently provide in uncompensated care now. Because, I mean, it does mention affordability and impact to taxpayers here, but that is really, I think, something that we could strengthen and personalize a little bit, and really, hopefully, tell a story about how this will impact El Paso County specifically and the taxpayers here. I don't know, I mean, I'm assuming UMC has that information we could get from them.
Yes, I've been working with UMC, with Ruben Vought and Elisa Hernandez. They did share some one-pagers, and some of that info is included, but not, but you're right. I can add on a paragraph if you, if you'd like, after the second paragraph where we mentioned how many people are impacted in the congressional district. I know that the Congresswoman put out that information, which is very helpful. But if you'd like, I can just add something after that paragraph to say, this is how much it's costing our hospital district, and then just get that info from UMC.
Yeah, I mean, it would, the way I was reading it, would make sense to put it at the end of the second to last paragraph, where you're talking about fiscally responsible choice that impacts taxpayers.
Got it. Yes, adding it all there. Okay, definitely, I can add that information after, after that sentence. I think it would make sense. You're right. Unless there's any other feedback from the rest of the court.
I had other comments not related to the letter, and just a couple of issues that I'm tracking, and I don't know how closely we track the information that NACO puts out, but they've been putting out a lot of information related to HUD, cutting the continuum of care funding for housing, which could have dramatic impacts here for our homeless prevention efforts. And I get that information through the Economic and Workforce Development Committee, but I'm not sure if anybody here is tracking that. There might be an opportunity to send some letters to our delegation on that. And I know that there's litigation that's been filed to stop that, those cuts from happening as well.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Melissa Carillo, County Operations. We can definitely, if you'll allow, Elisa and I to circle back to really clarify what's going on there and then bring back an item regarding potential letters. We'd absolutely do that. One thing I wanted to mention is we recently met with staff of Congresswoman Veronica Escobar, and given the timing and the tax credits, this kind of jumped to the forefront, which is why we wanted to get on your agenda. And I apologize for placing it on a resolution day, but just there's some critical timing happening with regards to the tax credits. But absolutely, Commissioner Butler, if you'll let me circle back, and we can bring in an additional item with letters for your consideration in the near future.
Okay. And just one other issue that we talked about briefly at our transit board meeting last week, and something that I know our executive director is watching very carefully is potential cuts to transit, federal transit funding, which would cripple our transit operations in El Paso County. So I understand the tax credits are, you know, there's a timing urgency for that, but there are a lot of other issues related to federal spending cuts that I think I would like to see if we're tracking them and how we could participate in advocating for those in the next couple of months.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Will do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other feedback on the letter or on this item?
No? We're okay.
Then get a motion to approve the letter with the edits as suggested by Commissioner Butler, and then we'll make sure to send that letter this week.
Thank you, Elisa. As always, thank you for keeping us up to date. Thank you.
We have a motion to approve the changes for the letters by Commissioner Coronado, second by Judge Sanmaniego. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day, Elisa.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you. Item eight, human resources, 8A. Receive an update, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding HB 718 and the county tax assessor collector's office.
Judge Commissioners, Valeria Fernandez with the Human Resources Department. As requested by the court, the HR department is here to provide the weekly update on the tax assessor collector's office and its ongoing progress with HB 718. Since our last update, we do have the following information to share. The tax office currently has seven vacancies, and as previously reported, two of those positions will be filled in January. Three employees were promoted this pay period, which vacated two customer relations specialist positions and one customer relations specialist intermediate position. The vacant accounting specialist intermediate position was posted internally and is anticipated to be filled soon. And when this position is filled, it will leave an entry-level accounting specialist position for which we have already posted and tested for. The results are being sent to the department today. The last vacancy is an investigator position, which was vacated recently. We are also concluding the testing phase for the entry-level customer relations specialist in anticipation of future vacancies. And our talent management team will continue to work with the tax office to expedite any recruitment efforts. The court was previously updated that the tax office will work the two Saturday sessions in the first two weeks of December. And so at this time, there are 576 pending transactions in Web Dealer. This is a reduction of 305 transactions from the last reporting date that we provided last week. We'll continue to monitor staffing, training, process adjustments, and report to the court, and then the time and motion study is forthcoming. Does the court have any questions?
Question?
I guess my question is, we've gotten, my office has gotten a lot of outreach recently due to the tax office being closed one day a week at the East Side Annex. And I believe the posting on the door says, "Due to a staffing shortage." And so I, I guess I want more clarity about the staffing needs that have been communicated by the tax assessor collector. From my understanding, we've been responsive to all of his requests and have prioritized filling the positions that he's asked for. So I'm really trying to get a better understanding of what needs are still pending, and if there's any way that we can validate that there's a staffing shortage that requires a closing of offices.
Val, if I can respond to that before you add any details. So one of the things that Mr. Gonzalez has said is that we have denied his request for staff. And he's talking about over the last couple of years, we have not denied his request for staff, we have not accepted requests for staffing. So departments, the sheriff's office is a great example. They have staffing needs. They have used other positions to create the positions they needed, but he hasn't been able to submit staffing requests the last couple of years. So those are, that's, he, I know he phrases it as his requests have been denied. His requests have not been able to be submitted for evaluation. The time and motion study that HR is completing will tell us more information based on the number of transactions, the time it takes, and then, you know, relief factors that have to be considered and other factors that have to be considered in providing full staffing. It will give us a recommendation on how much more staffing, if any, but if more staffing is needed for the tax office to be able to operate at a reasonable operational level. So hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll get that and be able to take it under advisement as we consider allocating positions coming into the coming 2026 year.
Betsy, I have a question as well. Have we looked at other counties that are similar to, that are going through the same thing and what they're doing? And I mean, are they increasing staffing by large amounts? Are they spending lots more on overtime like we are? What's going on in other counties? And what can we do to, what else can we do to make sure that we, you know, we're being as efficient as possible? Because I don't really believe that throwing more resources all the time, or money or staff is the correct way to do things. We need to look at efficiency first.
There's, there's a few things about this. So the large counties that I've talked to, which is the majority of our largest counties, the ones I've spoken to directly have not added staffing, have not added overtime. They started doing training early on beyond what the state provided to try to get dealers to minimize mistakes by the time it was actually required to be implemented. But that's not to say that we weren't short-staffed before the law change. So this HR study will help us with that. But as far as efficiency and, you know, there's so many things to any operation and leadership, how you manage it. So you can, you can, to your point, Commissioner, you can give as much staffing as possible, as long as it's being used effectively, that there's no morale challenges, no other operational challenges. Those things also are an impact to efficiency. And so that's part of what I do believe when HR completes its time and motion But as far as efficiency and, you know, there's so many things to any operation and leadership, how you manage it. So you can, to your point, Commissioner, you can give as much staffing as possible as long as it's being used effectively, that there's no morale challenges, no other operational challenges. Those things also are an impact to efficiency. And so that's part of what I do believe when HR completes its time in motion study, it'll be able to tell us comparatively for the number of transactions. We have web dealers. Some other counties don't have web dealers. You know, what are, I'm sorry, not web dealers, but we have contracted offices. Those, all of those factors need to be taken in. But even if it's apples to apples, how we're operating is also an important part of the analysis because that could be a factor as much as well. So even like our sick leave comparison to other counties, which can be a sign of the morale in the office. Those are things that would need to be taken into consideration. I also want to mention that the tax assessor has indicated that there's a resistance to give him staffing or space. And I want to be clear that there's no individualized resistance to him having the space he needs or the staff that he needs. As you mentioned, though, he needs to be using it efficiently. And just coming and asking for staff, no, none of our departments are allowed to just come ask for staff without justifying the request, showing that they're using their current staff efficiently. There is no different standard being applied to the tax assessor. He is just not meeting our basic standard to request staff in the way he does it. He needs to be able to show the data, show how he's using his staff efficiently.
And we've had conversations with him over years. I have been around for a long time and have had, every time I met with him, have had similar conversations about that exact issue.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I think one of the hardest things is the discrepancy between what's coming out of his office and then what we're trying to accomplish. And, you know, I've always felt we should be more in partnership, but it's just really difficult that, you know, we go through all of this. We're trying our best to, as much help as we can. And then coming out of the office is like we're, you know, just sitting in our hands. So we sort of, just a way we could, you know, close that gap between what's really happening and what's being put out there. And of course, he's an elected official, so he could do what he needs to do. But I think in, for the community, it's confusing the community tremendously. I mean, I get a lot of calls about, you know, we're not assisting and then we have to go through the whole thing.
It's about correcting the record and setting the record straight. It's not about trying to point fingers. I mean, we're all a team and we're trying to address this problem as quickly and as efficiently as we possibly can. But we also need to make sure that the public understands what's being done and what has been done and what hasn't and, you know, how we got here and what we're doing to get out of here.
I agree. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, Commissioner Coronado?
Has he used up the allotment that we did for overtime?
No, not yet, sir.
He still has not?
It's only about half, I think, right, as of the last update?
As of the last update. And so this is periodically updated because it's deducted from that account once payroll runs, which is every two weeks. And the last time we reported, it was almost $11,000 out of the 20 that's been approved.
And I know Mr. Gonzalez was out of town for a couple of weeks. Do we know if he's back?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So then perhaps we can ask him to be present at the next update so we can maybe answer some of these questions for us.
And Commissioner, as to your question previously, if there was other counties that had approved new positions. From our records and what we had been notified, there's been three counties, two, Denton and Montgomery, that did approve new positions. It was two and three new positions. Bear County also added new staffing, but I believe they opened a large new office from that location. And it was 20 full-service deputies that were added at that point. And so we are reviewing and that is, will be part of that analysis that we're conducting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question. I know that up till now, these weekly updates have been related to to the changes in legislation and the requirements that are coming forth because of that. But related to the office closures, do you think, do we, if we wanted to talk about that and address that, should we have a separate agenda item in a future meeting? And my question is, so up till now, the primary impacted community has been the dealer community. But the calls that my office is getting now are from people who are just going to the tax office to renew their registrations and, you know, do their basic renewals or pay their taxes. They're taking time off of work and, you know, adjusting their schedules, expecting the tax office to be open, and they show up and it's not. And it's not always accessible or easy for them to travel across town to find a tax office that is open. And so if this is going to be ongoing, I think it would be helpful if we could get more information from the tax assessor collector on how long that's going to continue. And then if there's something that we can do to better communicate that to the public, recognizing that the tax assessor collector, and this is what I tell my constituents, is we cannot control whether he closes his office or not or where he does that. That's his decision and he's operating his office and making those decisions. But it is impacting the people who live in our communities. And so if there's a way that we can maybe communicate that a little bit better, especially with the closures, if we can figure out how long that's going to be taking, I think that would be very helpful for the community.
So right now, we are able to discuss the item in terms of signage because presumably, right, we have his action with regards to 718, right? So because of presumably their work on that has affected other items. If we are going to take a deep discussion to all the other projects and things that he does, I would recommend we bring that back. But I think we do have a little bit of leeway if they're working on 718 and that's therefore impacting their hours and signage we may need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when these closures are happening, do we know that all the personnel are working on the issues related to 718? Do we know anything from that, from the office?
It's my understanding that the staff in those locations is then shifted to work on the web dealer. So that way, from my understanding, the staff of the office that's closed each of those days is then reassigned to work on that web dealer.
All of them?
Items. I can't say for certain, Commissioner, I'm sorry, but that's my understanding, is that that staff is then reallocated or reassigned to that.
These are the kind of things that we need to know.
Yeah, that's why I think we need to ask him to be present at our next update.
Absolutely.
Is there anything else I can answer?
Thank you. Appreciate everything you're doing.
Okay, we will take no action for item 8A. Item 9, Public Works, 9A. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso area transportation services, local government corporations' proposed fiscal year 2026 staffing plan.
Yes, County Judge and members of the Commissioners Court, John Ando, Executive Director of Transit Operations for ETA. And I'm here today to request the Commissioners Court's consideration to authorize the director, let me use the exact wording, to take appropriate action to approve funding for the El Paso area transportation services, local government corporations' proposed fiscal year 2026 staffing plan and further approve reorganization in conjunction with the El Paso County Human Resources Department. At the July 2025 ETA Board of Directors meeting, I did present a proposal of a staffing structure for ETA to prepare ETA for separation from county government next fiscal year and to ensure that the organization has the appropriate fiscal, technical, and legal capacity to manage federal transit administration grants and the various transit programs that is presently under the purview of ETH. Presently, in the current budget, we have a director, which is myself, an associate transportation planner, a transit planner, an administrative specialist senior, and then one vacant position, which is the senior transit project manager. We are proposing to reclassify the senior transit project manager and then add three additional positions that would function in four distinct units of operations. We would have an operations group, a planning group, a finance group, and an administration group. The proposed positions that I'm proposing to add include an accounting and office manager, which will lead the finance group, a contract coordinator, which will support the transit operations group under the transit planner, a granting compliance specialist that would ensure that all of ETA's grants that we would be receiving directly from the FTA as well as from TechDOT, ensuring that we're complying with those grants. And then a human services transportation plan coordinator that would support the planning unit and ensure that we're effectively planning transit services for the county. We have included in the ETA budget, which was transmitted to the ETA board and approved at its September meeting, the appropriate funding through various TechDOT's grants to cover these positions. And we are requesting that the Commissioners Court approve the proposed staffing plan and that we will coordinate with Human Resources on the next steps to fill those positions. I should stress that the positions are in the budget for six months. So we anticipate we would start recruiting in early winter of 2026 and fill those positions around the spring timeframe of 2026. And I'm happy to answer any questions about this proposal authority.
I just have one comment. Thank you, Mr. Ando, for that overview. As Mr. Ando mentioned, the ETA board did review the staffing plan in July, right after Mr. Ando came on board. And I also had the opportunity to sit in a meeting with Mr. Gonzalez, who is the lead for TechDOT for El Paso, for the transit side of TechDOT. And he was presented the staffing plan as well. And he gave us his blessing and really commended Mr. Ando for the thoughtfulness he put into that because it does mimic what other transit operations that are the size of ETA have for staffing, not just in terms of size, but in the positions that Mr. Ando is trying to create and hire for. So, Mr. Ando, I appreciate your thoughtfulness in putting the staffing plan together. And again, this, we have ensured that there is sufficient budget for these positions in the next fiscal year.
Good morning, Anna Schumacher, Assistant County Attorney. I'm just going to restate that motion that Mr. Ando said at the beginning. Mr. Ando, please let me know if I misstate anything. That was to approve funding for the El Paso area transportation services, local government corporations' proposed fiscal year 2026 staffing plan and further approve reorganization in conjunction with the El Paso County Human Resources Department.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Butler, second by Judge Samaniego. The voting is open.
Judge, Commissioners, may I make a comment first? This is Barbara Parker, County Auditor. My understanding is that the funding is through the grants. It's not through county funding unless we use some of the grants that require a 20% match, and they do have available match.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, John. Nice sweater, by the way.
Yes, it's my San Francisco Muni cable car sweater. True transit nerd over here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye, John. Safe travels.
Have a good day.
This brings us to item 10, Executive Session. Before we move into Executive Session, we do have a legal memo to read in by county attorneys for item 10C.
Thank you, Ms. Dominguez. Anna Schumacher, again, Assistant County Attorney. So staff is asking that item 10C be heard in Executive Session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.0725. The county is currently in negotiations with Phillips-Uresti-Meacham Partners regarding the consulting services agreement. The information to be discussed includes issues of business and financial information related to those contract negotiations, and the court must be free to discuss those issues without undermining the county's position. Therefore, Erica Rizales Nagaglioni, as your legal advisor, has determined that deliberation in an open meeting concerning these business and financial issues relating to those negotiations would have a detrimental effect on the position of the Commissioners Court in negotiations. Therefore, I am requesting that Commissioners Court unanimously vote that deliberations in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the Commissioners and the county in the negotiations, and that all said deliberations take place in closed session. I would further request that the Commissioners Court direct the county administration Commissioners Court reporters to ensure that all proceedings in closed session be recorded. If the Commissioners Court agrees, I need a motion, a second, and a recorded vote at this time. And I will also note that a copy of this legal memo has been provided to the county administration Commissioners Court reporters to be made a part of the official court records.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Butler, second by Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open. Motion carries. Commissioners Court will now recess into Executive Session to discuss items 10A through 10H pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.0725. Commissioners Court will recommit to take official action. It is 12:15 PM.
Oh my gosh, the ledges are wonderful. They grind amazing. Everything is smooth. It's a beautiful park. We are so grateful. Thank you so much.
One, two, and three.
So today is a very, very happy day because we are here celebrating the renovations at Aguaduliza Park, but also the naming of this specific skateboard park to the Mario Navarro Skateboard Park. Mario was a person who was very involved in our community and who spent a lot of his own personal time teaching children how to skateboard and how to skateboard safely. A big part of this project was receiving guidance and assistance from actual skateboarding professionals. And we had a skate park here at Aguaduliza before, but it's nothing like what you see today. The county received grant funds in 2021 to build three safe skate parks, and it was matched by county funds. The family of Lizbeth Avila contacted us to let us know that they would like naming the park in her honor as an option, and we were more than happy to do that. Lizbeth was an avid skater and unfortunately passed away due to a skating injury, and so this is a way to honor her legacy. Well, you know, it's a bittersweet. Of course, I would want to see her here, but I know that through her tragedy, we can offer now these safe skate parks. And this park was designed with safety in mind. And so we're really, really proud of the fact that we're promoting safety in all aspects, and we hope that the skating community will use our parks and know that it's a safe place for them to do so.
Oh, this is a great event that we have here out at Gallegos Park in the northwest area of the county, right next to Canuteo Middle School.
It's really nice. There's a lot of different areas that we can do different tricks on. I'm really hoping that there's more skate parks to come.
As you can see, a lot of the community members are out here. These skateboarders have been out here, actually, as soon as it was finished, they didn't wait for the ribbon cutting. They've been out here daily using this park.
Yeah, so I love the fact that, one thing that stuck out to me is this halfpipe here. Not a lot of skate parks here have halfpipes that we can utilize.
What this means is that this community now is on track to make sure that El Paso moves forward with quality of life projects.
Oh, it was excellent.
This is our second annual dog canine fiesta. We allow the dogs to come swim with their owners for the end of the season. It kicks off our highlighted program last year. We're going to have dog days in the summer. Everybody is super excited. The dogs are actually inside the water for the majority of the time, and all of our participants are just super excited to be here and very happy. The first one we have is Cubaca. The mariachi. This is super important to bring the community together for special events like this. There's not a lot of places for owners to swim with their dogs, so that's where we came up with the idea to enjoy the entire month of September. And it's just, it's an overall exciting event for our community to enjoy. So it's been really, really exciting for the end of the summer to have such a different event.
Lila Minnie Mouse.
Hey, Lila, you're the winner. My dog, Lila, was dressed up as Minnie Mouse, and I was Mickey Mouse. And we decided, we were looking for something fun to do, so we heard about this, and we came home a winner. The water makes it so much more fun. The costumes made it lively. You could judge a community by the way they treat their dogs. And clearly, El Paso cares a lot about their canines, and this canine fiesta was a great, great thing to do, and I know they're going to keep doing things. And clearly, everybody has had a great time today.
Thank you to everybody who has joined the county for the entire season. It has been a very great summer with a lot of people that just really came to enjoy the call. So we want to thank everybody who joined us this summer, and we can't wait to start again next season.
Hola, El Paso. I'm Laura Gallegos, and this is El Paso County Connects. The county continues working hard on community projects, events, and voter-approved improvements across our region. Let's take a look at what's been happening around the county. El Paso County and AT&amp;T kicked off a major broadband expansion that will bring high-speed internet to more than 1,000 homes, including 57 colonias. As part of the celebration, 125 refurbished laptops were donated to families to help bridge the digital divide. The county hosted this year's State of the County event where Judge Ricardo Samaniego delivered the keynote address. He highlighted major progress in public safety, infrastructure, economic development, and the voter-approved bond projects now moving forward across the region. Families camped out under the stars during the annual Escarrete Park Campout, a weekend filled with outdoor fun, games, and community bonding at one of the county's most iconic family gathering places. Communities across El Paso County came together to honor our heroes with Veterans Day parades and celebrations. As the veterans' capital of the USA, the county proudly recognized the service and sacrifice of our veterans and active-duty military. The county officially opened the new Sparks Park, bringing fresh recreational space to the community. The project was made possible through partnerships and will continue to grow with future improvements funded by the 2024 Capital Improvement Bond. The county continues its commitment to keeping residents informed every step of the way on 2024 voter-approved projects. This month, two major community meetings took place, one in Fabin's for the San Felipe Off-Highway Vehicle Park improvements and another for the new county animal shelter. Residents had the chance to review early concepts, ask questions, and share ideas that will help shape these projects as design work moves forward. It's all part of the county's effort to ensure transparency, accountability, and strong community engagement throughout the entire bond program. That's it for this month's El Paso County Connects. We hope to see you at the Escarrete Park Improvement Meeting coming up on December 9th as these community projects continue moving forward. From all of us at El Paso County, we wish you and your family a very happy Thanksgiving. Until next time, stay warm and stay connected.
Welcome to you to the Lights on the Lake 2025 Lighting Ceremony at the beautiful Escarrete Park.
The sunsets, the mountains, our beautiful desert. You guys look amazing. I like the energy. I'm so grateful that all of you guys came out here to listen to some music, to have some fun.
As you all know, Escarrete Park is the heart of El Paso County, and we are so happy to have so many of you here celebrating with us tonight as we celebrate tradition and community and the joy of the season.
I think it was pretty awesome. Yeah, I liked it. Very colorful for the spirit of Christmas, so I liked it. You know what? It's awesome. This is the first time I come here, so it's really awesome to know that our county's coming together and doing new stuff.
Get everyone in the holiday spirit. Better than being at home. And, you know, get everybody out and enjoy the holidays. Get ready for them.
You know, it's free. People can come here. They can enjoy. They can ride in their cars, or they could get down. Lots of beautiful places to take pictures with the family.
Our Parks and Recreation Team here at El Paso County dedicated 2,660 staff hours, and our incredible volunteers and community service members contributed an additional 2,380 hours to bring this holiday experience to life.
Merry Christmas to everybody here in El Paso, and a special thanks to El Paso County, especially all the commissioners here. And we'll keep everything going strong here in El Paso, especially here at Escarrete. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Happy Christmas and Happy New Year.
Oh my gosh, the ledges are wonderful. They grind amazing. Everything is smooth. It's a beautiful park. We are so grateful. Thank you so much.
One, two, and three.
So today is a very, very happy day because we are here celebrating the renovations at Aguaduliza Park, but also the naming of this specific skateboard park to the Mario Navarro Skateboard Park. Mario was a person who was very involved in our community and who spent a lot of his own personal time teaching children how to skateboard and how to skateboard safely. A big part of this project was receiving guidance and assistance from actual skateboarding professionals. We had a skate park here at Aguaduliza before, but it's nothing like what you see today. The county received grant funds in 2021 to build three safe skate parks and it was matched by county funds. The family of Lizbeth Avila contacted us to let us know that they would like naming the park in her honor as an option and we were more than happy to do that. Lizbeth was an avid skater and unfortunately passed away due to a skating injury and so this is a way to honor her legacy.
Well, you know, it's a bittersweet. Of course, I would want to see her here, but I know that through her tragedy, we can offer now these safe skate parks. And this park was designed with safety in mind and so we're really, really proud of the fact that we're promoting safety in all aspects and we hope that the skating community will use our parks and know that it's a safe place for them to do so.
Oh, this is a great event that we have here out at Gallegos Park in the northwest area of the county, right next to Canuteo Middle School.
It's really nice. There's a lot of different areas that we can do different tricks on. I'm really hoping that there's more skate parks to come.
As you can see, a lot of the community members are out here. These skateboarders have been out here, actually as soon as it was finished, they didn't wait for the ribbon cutting. They've been out here daily using this park.
Yeah, so I love the fact that, one thing that stuck out to me is this half-pipe here. Not a lot of skate parks here have half-pipes that we can utilize.
What this means is that this community now is on track to make sure that El Paso moves forward with quality-of-life projects.
Oh, it was excellent.
This is our second annual Dog Canine Fiesta. We allow the dogs to come swim with their owners for the end of the season. It kicks off our highlighted program last year. We're going to have Dog Days of the Summer. Everybody's super excited. The dogs are actually inside the water for the majority of the time and all of our participants are just super excited to be here and very happy.
The first one we have is Cubaca.
This is super important to bring the community together for special events like this. There's not a lot of places for owners to swim with their dogs, so that's where we came up with the idea to enjoy the entire month of September. And it's just, it's an overall exciting event for our community to enjoy. So it's been really, really exciting for the end of the summer to have such a different event.
My dog Lila was dressed up as Minnie Mouse and I was Mickey Mouse. And we decided, we were looking for something fun to do, so we heard about this and we came home a winner. The water makes it so much more fun. The costumes made it lively. You could judge a community by the way they treat their dogs and clearly El Paso cares a lot about their canines and this Canine Fiesta was a great, uh, great thing to do and I know they're going to keep doing things. And clearly, everybody has had a great time today.
Thank you to everybody who has joined the county for the entire season. It has been a very great summer with a lot of people that just really came to enjoy the fall. So we want to thank everybody who joined us this summer and we can't wait to start again next season.
Hola, El Paso. I'm Laura Gallegos and this is El Paso County Connects. The county continues working hard on community projects, events, and voter-approved improvements across our region. Let's take a look at what's been happening around the county. El Paso County and AT&amp;T kicked off a major broadband expansion that will bring high-speed internet to more than 1,000 homes, including 57 colonias. As part of the celebration, 125 refurbished laptops were donated to families to help bridge the digital divide. The county hosted this year's State of the County event where Judge Ricardo Sabañego delivered the keynote address. He highlighted major progress in public safety, infrastructure, economic development, and the voter-approved bond projects now moving forward across the region. Families camped out under the stars during the annual Escarate Park Campout, a weekend filled with outdoor fun, games, and community bonding at one of the county's most iconic family gathering places. Communities across El Paso County came together to honor our heroes with Veterans Day parades and celebrations. As the veterans' capital of the USA, the county proudly recognized the service and sacrifice of our veterans and active-duty military. The county officially opened the new Sparks Park, bringing fresh recreational space to the community. The project was made possible through partnerships and will continue to grow with future improvements funded by the 2024 Capital Improvement Bond. The county continues its commitment to keeping residents informed every step of the way on 2024 voter-approved projects. This month, two major community meetings took place: one in Fabin's for the San Felipe Off-Highway Vehicle Park improvements and another for the new county animal shelter. Residents had the chance to review early concepts, ask questions, and share ideas that will help shape these projects as design work moves forward. It's all part of the county's effort to ensure transparency, accountability, and strong community engagement throughout the entire bond program. That's it for this month's El Paso County Connects. We hope to see you at the Escarate Park Improvement Meeting coming up on December 9th as these community projects continue moving forward. From all of us at El Paso County, we wish you and your family a very happy Thanksgiving. Until next time, stay warm and stay connected.
Welcome to you to the Lights on the Lake 2025 Lighting Ceremony at the beautiful Escarate Park.
The sunsets, the mountains, our beautiful desert. You guys look amazing. I like the energy. I'm so grateful that all of you guys came out here to listen to some music, to have some fun.
As you all know, Escarate Park is the heart of El Paso County and we are so happy to have so many of you here celebrating with us tonight as we celebrate tradition and community and the joy of the season.
I think it was pretty awesome. Yeah, I liked it. Very colorful for the spirit of Christmas. So I liked it. You know what? It's awesome. This is the first time I come here, so it's really awesome to know that our county's coming together and doing new stuff.
Get everyone in the holiday spirit. Better than being at home and, you know, get everybody out and enjoy the holidays. Get ready for them.
You know, it's free. People can come here. They can enjoy. They can ride in their cars or they could get down. Lots of beautiful places to take pictures with the family.
Our Parks and Recreation Team here at El Paso County dedicated 2,660 staff hours and our incredible volunteers and community service members contributed an additional 2,380 hours to bring this holiday experience to life.
Merry Christmas to everybody here in El Paso and a special thanks to El Paso County, especially all the commissioners here. And we'll keep everything going strong here in El Paso, especially here at Escarate. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year!
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year!
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year!
Happy Christmas and Happy New Year!
Happy Christmas and Happy New Year!
Oh my gosh. The ledges are wonderful. They grind amazing. Everything is smooth. It's a beautiful park. We are so grateful. Thank you so much.
One, two, and three.
So today is a very, very happy day because we are here celebrating the renovations at Aguadurisa Park, but also the naming of this specific skateboard park to the Mario Navarro Skateboard Park. Mario was a person who was very involved in our community and who spent a lot of his own personal time teaching children how to skateboard and how to skateboard safely. A big part of this project was receiving guidance and assistance from actual skateboarding professionals. We had a skate park here at Aguadurisa before, but it's nothing like what you see today. The county received grant funds in 2021 to build three safe skate parks, and it was matched by county funds. The family of Lizbeth Avila contacted us to let us know that they would like naming the park in her honor as an option, and we were more than happy to do that. Lizbeth was an avid skater and unfortunately passed away due to a skating injury, and so this is a way to honor her legacy. Well, you know, it's a bittersweet. Of course, I would want to see her here, but I know that through her tragedy, we can offer now these safe skate parks. And this park was designed with safety in mind. And so we're really, really proud of the fact that we're promoting safety in all aspects, and we hope that the skating community will use our parks and know that it's a safe place for them to do so.
Oh, this is a great event that we have here out at Gallegos Park in the northwest area of the county, right next to Canuteo Middle School.
It's really nice. There's a lot of different areas that we can do different tricks on. I'm really hoping that there's more skate parks to come.
As you can see, a lot of the community members are out here. These skateboarders have been out here. Actually, as soon as it was finished, they didn't wait for the ribbon cutting. They've been out here daily using this park.
Yes, so I love the fact that... One thing that stuck out to me is this halfpipe here. Not a lot of skate parks here have halfpipes that we can utilize.
What this means is that this community now is on track to make sure that El Paso moves forward with quality-of-life projects.
Oh, it was excellent.
This is our second annual Dog Canine Fiesta. We allow the dogs to come swim with their owners for the end of the season. It kicks off our pilot program last year. We're going to have Dog Days of the Summer. Everybody's super excited. The dogs are actually inside the water for the majority of the time, and all of our participants are just super excited to be here and very happy.
The first one we have is Cubaca.
This is super important to bring the community together for special events like this. There's not a lot of places for owners to swim with their dogs, so that's where we came up with the idea to enjoy the entire month of September. And it's just, it's an overall exciting event for our community to enjoy. So it's been really, really exciting for the end of the summer to have such a different event.
Lila, Minnie Mouse!
Hey, Lila, you're the winner! My dog, Lila, was dressed up as Minnie Mouse, and I was Mickey Mouse. And we decided we were looking for something fun to do, so we heard about this, and we came home a winner. The water makes it so much more fun. The costumes made it lively. You could judge a community by the way they treat their dogs. And clearly, El Paso cares a lot about their canines, and this Canine Fiesta was a great, great thing to do, and I know they're going to keep doing things. And clearly, everybody has had a great time today.
Thank you to everybody who has joined the county for the entire season. It has been a very great summer with a lot of people that just really came to enjoy the call. So we want to thank everybody who joined us this summer, and we can't wait to start again next season.
Hola, El Paso. I'm Laura Gallegos, and this is El Paso County Connects. The county continues working hard on community projects, events, and voter-approved improvements across our region. Let's take a look at what's been happening around the county. El Paso County and AT&amp;T kicked off a major broadband expansion that will bring high-speed internet to more than 1,000 homes, including 57 colonias. As part of the celebration, 125 refurbished laptops were donated to families to help bridge the digital divide. The county hosted this year's State of the County event where Judge Ricardo Sabañego delivered the keynote address. He highlighted major progress in public safety, infrastructure, economic development, and the voter-approved bond projects now moving forward across the region. Families camped out under the stars during the annual Escarate Park Campout, a weekend filled with outdoor fun, games, and community bonding at one of the county's most iconic family gathering places. Communities across El Paso County came together to honor our heroes with Veterans Day parades and celebrations. As the veterans' capital of the USA, the county proudly recognized the service and sacrifice of our veterans and active-duty military. The county officially opened the new Sparks Park, bringing fresh recreational space to the community. The project was made possible through partnerships and will continue to grow with future improvements funded by the 2024 Capital Improvement Bond. The county continues its commitment to keeping residents informed every step of the way on 2024 voter-approved projects. This month, two major community meetings took place: one in Fabens for the San Felipe Off-Highway Vehicle Park improvements and another for the new county animal shelter. Residents had the chance to review early concepts, ask questions, and share ideas that will help shape these projects as design work moves forward. It's all part of the county's effort to ensure transparency, accountability, and strong community engagement throughout the entire bond program. That's it for this month's El Paso County Connects. We hope to see you at the Escarate Park Improvement Meeting coming up on December 9th, as these community projects continue moving forward. From all of us at El Paso County, we wish you and your family a very happy Thanksgiving. Until next time, stay warm and stay connected.
Welcome to you to the Lights on the Lake 2025 Lighting Ceremony at the beautiful Escarate Park.
The sunsets, the mountains, our beautiful desert. You guys look amazing. I like the energy. I'm so grateful that all of you guys came out here to listen to some music, to have some fun.
As you all know, Escarate Park is the heart of El Paso County, and we are so happy to have so many of you here celebrating with us tonight. As we celebrate tradition and community and the joy of the season.
I think it was pretty awesome. Yeah, I liked it. Very colorful for the spirit of Christmas, so I liked it. You know what? It's awesome. This is the first time I come here, so it's really awesome to know that our county's coming together and doing new stuff.
Get everyone in the holiday spirit. Better than being at home. And you know, get everybody out and enjoy the holidays. Get ready for them.
You know, it's free. People can come here. They can enjoy. They can ride in their cars, or they could get down. Lots of beautiful places to take pictures with the family.
Our Parks and Recreation Team here at El Paso County dedicated 2,660 staff hours, and our incredible volunteers and community service members contributed an additional 2,380 hours to bring this holiday experience to life.
Merry Christmas to everybody here in El Paso, and a special thanks to El Paso County, especially all the commissioners here. And we'll keep everything going strong here in El Paso, especially here at Escarate. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year!
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year!
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year!
Happy Christmas and Happy New Year!
Go ahead.
Commissioners Court has reconvened to a regular open session. Item 11A, discuss and take appropriate action pertaining to the Commissioners Court's participation in the El Paso Metropolitan Planning Organization meetings, and the NPO's proposed amendments to its bylaws.
Good afternoon. Anna Schumacher is at county attorney. We're not requesting any action for this item. Thank you.
So no action for item 11A. Item 11B, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the consulting services agreement between El Paso County and Phillips-Uretzi Metam Partners, contract number 20250811.
Good afternoon. Anna Schumacher is at county attorney. I heard Ms. Correia say no requested action at this time. Thank you.
No action for item 11B. That completes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Thank you. Just wishing all of you a great week. Thank you. Appreciate everything you're with us, promotion team.
This concludes today's meeting at 1:16 PM.